Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 28th, 2020. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, I don't have any additions or corrections tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Invocation Hunter Ridge Community Church. Good evening.
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. Let's bow our heads together to pray. Our Heavenly Father, it's a privilege and an honor for me to be able to lift these city council members to you in prayer. Think of Mary Christensen and Dave Sebastian, Steve Cook, Chad Shamoskier, Mayor Gary Forsier, Matt Johnich, Mark Sabora, Kent Exner, and Melissa Stark. Forgive me if I'm missing someone, but Lord, it's good to be able to bring them before you tonight because they serve and they seek the welfare of the city of Hutchinson. And Father, that's what I'm praying for too, that in all of the business of the evening, it is done in such a way that truly is for the welfare of our city. Lord, I pray for its peace. I pray for the presence of God and the power of God to be over us. I pray for those who work and live in our city and to bless all that is being done. I think of reconstruction of roads and mental health workers, police, fire service, sector, schools. Lord, all of them in many ways serve a role in making our community a great community. And so I just pray for them tonight in all of the decisions that they need to deliberate about. I pray, Lord, that in our politics and our lifestyle and our worship, may our hope always reside in Jesus. So, Lord, even when it's dark sometimes, when it's tough, may our hope be found in you. Bless all of that, all that they do this evening. Give them wisdom. I pray this in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you.
Next is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have any tonight? All right, we have a couple of resolutions under there. Resolution number 15141, resolution accepting $1,000 donation from Beverly Bonti in honor of Dr. Brian Bonti to be dedicated to pave trail from the loose line to the law enforcement memorial park. Can we do both of them right away?
Okay.
All righty. We have resolution number 15142, resolution accepting $2,000 donations from the Village Ranch to Hutchinson Police Department. Donations dedicated to the tent meters and traffic safety vests.
Make a motion to accept both of them.
Second.
Question by Chad, second by Dave to approve both.
I was curious about the tent meters. I see that Chief-
Me too. I was gonna ask Chief Gifferson. What the heck's a tent meter?
Okay. So currently, we have two tent meters that test the level of darkness. Mayor, you should know exactly what they are. And they're fairly old.
The translucent of vehicle windows.
Yep. Exactly.
Okay.
And so these meters are actually, we'll have one in each squad car. They're much smaller, compact, easier to use than what we currently have. So that's what they're for.
So we will act if the officers are actively looking at that. If a vehicle goes by that makes it seem a little dark?
Absolutely. Yep.
Somebody actually asked about that, you know, a week or so ago.
Yep. Among other things, obviously, but that's certainly one of the violations that and chances are they're not going to receive a citation immediately out of something like that, but they would be required to remove it. And if they fail to remove it and they see it again, then subsequently, then they would receive a citation more than likely.
Now, being able to have one in each squad car, that makes it-
Yep, makes it a lot easier. Currently, the way we're operating is they stay, normally stay at the station. One stays at the station, one in a squad car. This way, everybody will have one, so it'll make it much more convenient.
Well, there's state law against that, isn't there?
Yes.
You can't have your windows tinted so dark.
Yep.
Right.
Fifty percent plus or minus three percent.
Right. I can remember when, years back, when we drove our cars around town, up and down Main Street, we always liked to have our windows tinted.
Yeah. It's great if you live in Arizona, Florida, that type of thing, but in Minnesota, we prize the police officer's safety more than we do the heat inside your car.
Right.
Thanks.
Please.
Chief.
Call a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Citizens addressing the city council, just come forward, state your name and address. All righty, approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of January 14th, 2020. Summary of closed meeting proceedings. City Administrator Annual Performance Review Session of January 14th.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second. Motion by Mary, second by Steve to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consent agenda. This will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of food vendor license renewal for Taco Del Bo.
Pastor.
Or should I just say the taco truck?
Probably better.
Okay. We'll just say the taco truck. Okay. B is approval of Minnesota DNR tree species diversification grant agreement. And we have approval of resolution number 15147, resolution appointing election judges for the presidential nomination primary election. D is approval of authorizing American Legion Post 96 to conduct off-site gambling at Peace Lutheran Church from February 10th through February 16th, 2020. E is approval of resolution number 15143, resolution adopting findings of facts and reasons for approval of a conditional use permit for the outpatient clinic for mental health services at 225 and 227 Third Avenue Northwest with favorable planning commission recommendation. And F is claims appropriation contract payments, register A. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
E, since John's here, the tree grant.
All righty.
I'll make a motion to approve the balance.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the balance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Mr. Olson.
Just had a question, John. You know, it talks about almost 300 trees will get planted, but most of them, 75% in parks and, you know, looking at our normal, well, when I look back, I think it was last April or something, when you had more of a count by trees in parks and boulevards. And if we do these numbers roughly, we'll wind up with like 400 ash trees in our parks, but 1,200 on the boulevards, almost three times. So would it be possible to concentrate on boulevards with our normal diversification?
That's the intent, is we would not do, we'd use the grant primarily for the park side so that other efforts can be done on the street. So, right.
Excellent.
And we did do, I think I shared that with you last fall, list of the roadways that have the higher percentages of ash tree concentrations. And so we've, you know, we've already done a few projects in the area, particularly east of the rec center. And so this year, we're going to try to work on the west side, some along the main priority routes, business routes that come in and out of the community. That seems to be where ash bore first is showing up in different communities, so we want to concentrate on those areas as well, so.
So it's in New Ulm now, right?
Yeah, Kimball.
Kimball?
Yes. So, you know, one could argue that it might already be here. I don't know. Because there usually ends up being, you know, three to five years before. So when they find and substantiate that there's an infestation, oftentimes it's been there for three to five years. So it's creeping ever closer. I think, you know, it's not a question of whether it's when, so.
The other question was, you know, this is a $30,000 grant, and I think that bore is great, the four-
Yeah, the four-foot auger, right, definitely. And utilizing the additional compost material, try to do a blend of about 25% in those excavated areas. And that just gives the tree that much more room to grow and expand and helps with future root problems, so.
But is it going to be like a one-to-one cut replace for that number? It just seems like we're probably planting more than-
Right. Some of these are going on areas where we've already done removals, so that's why that count is up higher. Because we already have several sites that are prepared, so we're going to utilize some of the grant funding to, for the trees on the sites that are prepared.
Okay. Sounds great.
Very good.
So, John, when you take the infested stuff for the ones that you take out and you take it to Andy, when he processes those trees, does that destroy the larvae and stuff that's in it?
Yeah, as long as the, as long as you get the chip size down and, yeah.
Yeah, the department has established a one-by-one dimensions, meaning, you know, one inch across, one inch, it can be three feet long, as long as one inch, essentially that is enough to kill the larvae. So all of our materials that we sell, we double grind and far exceed that expectation.
Very good. Make a motion to approve.
Thanks, John. I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consent agenda two, claims appropriation and contract payments, register B. I do have a check there for my company, so I will be abstaining.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve with me abstaining. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Andy, how long are you going to talk?
As much as I would like to say we get it done, I don't think we will.
Do you want to do 12? Since we have-
We could. All right, go down to new business. Awarding bid for the rec center re-roof and fascia project.
Marv?
Marv?
I moved you up.
Dave?
You're on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You can see the board action form that you've received describing the recreation center re-roof and facade replacement project. And with me tonight is Tara Ketchum. Tara is the architect with ISG that we've been working with, that prepared the plans and specifications. So we're asking tonight for approval to award the bids for this project. And with the approval, we would start construction about May 1st, maybe a little bit earlier. And we would have construction commence till about mid-August. We would hope to be done by August 13th, which I believe is the primary vote scheduled to be held at the rec center. The building was built in 1985, opened in 1986, and it, especially the roof, is in desperate need of replacement. And the sidewalls need some help as well. And we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor, council, we did, if you may recall, in May, we went out for bids in this project and we received none at that point. So a lot of it had to do with the timetable that we had established and the bidding season of when we went out for bids. And so this was out for bids in November. As you'll notice in your packet, we received six bids, which we were happy to receive this time, this time around. A little bit was from APX Construction Group. The base bid was 879,000. Our original estimate was about a million, just over a million dollars for that, so we're happy to see that. Those bid prices came in, and we also had some bid alternates. And I know the facilities committee did recommend that we go with bid alternate one from them as well, which is 16,500, which would put that total cost at 895,000 dollars.
Has that roof ever not leaked?
That's, so like I said, built in the mid-'80s. At the time, money was tight and we did things economically. And the roof lasted for at least 10 years until it started to leak. In the recent years, we've hired contractors to go up there and repair the leaks a number of times and without, well, with limited success. But a lot of the problems with just not only the roof, but the sidewalls, was the original construction was done economically. And to do it over like we're considering, you know, things have changed a lot. And at that time, our budget was about as minimal as you can imagine. So it's been leaking for a long time. And not only that, what happens with the way the block construction is, it's kind of a sandwich. There's cement block with insulation, then interior block. But the design of the roof, it doesn't get the water away from the building very well, so it penetrates the interior wall. So the paint on the inside won't stay on, and it's sort of like a wet basement a lot of the time. So this is project, you know, will help remedy those problems.
I had a question on the letter that Mr. Wagner sent. You know, he mentioned that some of the contractors didn't bid on the alternates three or four, but there was really only one contractor that didn't bid on that. Everybody else did, right?
I thought maybe it was two that didn't bid, or there was one.
There was one that was a little less than the other four. So one, there was only one.
Two, we talked to two of them, the one that didn't bid and another one. And they both had said that they had reservations about just wash, the power washing it, that it would deteriorate quickly just from the power washing.
But the other four must not have had that reservation?
It's possible. I know, we talked to, we did talk to all of them. A couple of them didn't even visit the building, so they didn't have as close a look at the exterior facade. So it's possible that they didn't understand it as well as the one that did not bid.
Can I just show you? Last week, I went out and just took a picture of existing building. So this is what it looks like right now. Like I said, built in the mid-'80s. Concrete block, steel, kind of like a coal shed. And you can't see from, you know, that well, but the deterioration of the block and some of the terminations between the steel and the block and just the detail of the roof. So this is, this is the before picture. And then we hope that this is the after picture, which you'll probably see in your packets. So it creates a whole new look for this building. And over time, the ice arena, the ice arena built in 1976, '77, that possibly could receive the same treatment. And then the arena built in 1999 would be next. So depending upon tonight's outcome, then we would take steps later on to accomplish those things. To, after 47 years, upgrade those facilities, it would be 50 years for the one problem by the time that happens.
Well, it's probably one of our most used buildings. I mean, it is well-used.
Yes.
This, as I've mentioned, and I don't know where that came up in the discussion, but the community has spoke pretty favorably or shown interest in upgrading the rec center. So, but we haven't had that discussion yet. Maybe there's possibilities of consolidating some programs, you know, between buildings and into an upgraded. So my only concern is, you know, investing extra in this right now and, you know, what comes out of that conversation? If we did the roof now, would there be any reason why the sidewalls could not be done as possibly part of another project in the future?
It would be a little bit difficult to do the sidewalls just due to some of the connection, the flashing details, the water dripping, that the roof wasn't connected to the wall. We'd have to redesign a little bit of that. Whatever it could be for that.
Steve, what you're describing was eight to 10 years off, best case scenario?
Maybe, maybe not. There's-
I agree with you, Chad. I think it's off in the future. It's eight to 10 years.
Yeah. I mean, realistically, and I know we could go with, I don't know, five years of sales tax, but it's not like, even if that gets approved, it's not like we're going to start construction six months later.
No. But if funding is approved, then it's not like it's got to be three or five years in the future.
No, that gets pretty close to that eight-year mark pretty quick.
Could be. I know there's different talk of, even if the legislature with the sales tax, I think you mentioned you were at Germantown. I just heard they actually had a second one on top of what they had first.
Sure.
That was approved, so.
That being said, like I went to the YMCA, this Saturday morning, this is, I went to the YMCA that they just put up there, and it was a $26 million facility. And I don't feel it was big enough for what people in Hutchinson say that they want. You know, I mean, it was nice, but it had like a four-lane pool and a hot tub that held three people and a little toddler, literally a three-person capacity. It was ridiculous. And like they had this little toddler pool that was heated, but it held 21 people. And it had a, like a weight area that was smaller than what you'd see at like a Snap Fitness. And it had a walking ring and two courts, you know, and that supposedly was 26 mil. So I, so what Hutchinson people say they want would probably be a $30 million gig, in my opinion, just from that little bit that I was there. But, you know, I still think that even if we fix this building, we're not going to tear it down. We'll probably just integrate it into the plan.
We're talking about tearing down the Econo Foods possibly for the PD.
Right, but that's a-
Because it doesn't maybe fit our needs, is, you know, not knowing what the vision is for an updated rec center. Who knows?
I just don't, I think it'd be possible to integrate the current rec center into the future facility, you know. And I don't know, I know people say they want like a YMCA-style facility, but in five to eight years, when they get the $30 million price tag, they may back off on that.
Change their minds.
You know, and I was shocked that that facility I was in on Saturday in Germantown cost whatever, 23 or 26 million, because it didn't look like it. You know, what I had in my head, what that kind of money would look like. I mean, the, they had one little pool feature that was like our toddler thing at our outdoor pool, and that was it. You know, nothing else. It was, certainly wasn't a water park. You know, I mean, it was, and the whole thing was new and it was nice, but for that kind of money, you'd think it was more, you know, and-
Was it busy?
There were people around, but it wasn't swamped. I mean, they had little kid swim lessons, so there was a lot of chaos because there was 47-year-olds there. But, you know, it wasn't swamped, you know, so.
I think before we get to that point, we really need to do our due diligence and look at the cost of everything and how we as a city would be able to pay for that.
Yeah. I mean, for the money, I think that this project makes a lot of sense.
I think it does, too. We fix what we have.
For now.
Yeah. I'd say do the maintenance on it, because this will take us out, what, another 40 years, Marv?
Well, that was, that was one other question I had. You know, we're not replacing the roof now. We're just putting another layer on top, right?
Right.
So in 30 years, if it's still there, then, and that might start leaking, say, do we just have to remove that top layer and we can put another layer on?
Potentially. I believe that it's a 30-year warranty on the roof, and that's typically what metal roofs are.
Yeah. But I guess my question is, do we just take off this new top layer?
You could. You can take off the new top layer and just replace that rather than take everything off and keep adding stuff.
The current top layer is weak for 20 years, though. You know, it'd be nice to have 30 years where it didn't.
I'm trying to stretch it out.
Yeah. I don't remember it not leaking to be honest, all the years I've talked about it.
You gotta remember how young we are.
I believe you saw it there maybe.
Doing the sidewalls, even with the lowest, if we didn't do it, we could save maybe 300,000 out of the project. So if you factor that over 10 years, it's, doesn't add up. It's not a huge part of it.
But still, it's kind of a maintenance thing, too, where, you know, you're sealing everything up. You're doing wrapping everything. And when you start piecemealing this, you know, to redo it, I mean, we still have water penetration from the sidewalls, correct, Marv?
Right. And that's the whole point, is to preserve what we've got.
The new roof would help with that because it's going to push that.
But the sidewall still need attention, obviously.
I would make a motion to approve awarding bid to the rec center.
I will second that.
Is that what the bid alternate one was recommended by facilities committee?
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Are there any other discussion on it? All in motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Time to rate 6 o'clock. So one, I have, I have a public hearing. Six oh one, I have, um, have a public hearing.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just like Mayor Fosier mentioned, a public hearing this evening for letting number one project, number twenty dash zero one, Highway fifteen, Main Street Downtown Reconstruction Project. We're going to talk during the public hearing and focus on what's required of us from improvement special assessment standpoint. Later on in the evening, we'll talk more about the cooperative construction agreement that's associated with this project that we reviewed at the last council meeting. At this point, you know, there's been a lot of information provided to property owners, both from, from MINDOT, from the city staff, from city staff with respect to utilities and special assessments, and then also from the Chamber of Commerce, Mary Hodson and crew, just informing business owners throughout the process that started many, many months ago, as this project began to be developed by MINDOT, the consultant, the SEH, and city staff. This was mailed out to adjacent property owners that are proposed to be assessed way back in May of twenty nineteen. And we basically began to engage property owners like we would for any, any project. You know, this is obviously familiar to, to many of you. It's our, basically the first step in our project special assessment process. We introduced the project, we talked about the proposed improvements. In this notice, we, we spent quite a bit of time talking about the, the water and sanitary sewer utility improvements. That's a, a large piece of this project from the, from the city's standpoint. We talked about the nuances of those services being installed, some of the services just simply being stubbed for future connections, what it would take to connect to those stubs during the project, and the level of coordination that would be, be necessary. And then we get to the back page, as usual, we talk about the hearing process. You know, we, we didn't live up to these dates, looking back here, but, you know, obviously as councils aware of, you know, things kind of just drug on this fall and, and into the winter with respect to, you know, the finalizing of the, the plan and specification documents. So this evening, we're administering the public hearing right here in the middle. There will be an assessment hearing, like I alluded to at the last council meeting. By the time MINDOT receives bids at the end of February, we ordered the assessment hearing. We'll have to do that at the first council meeting in March. And then to turn that around and do our formality and awarding our portion of the project to, to satisfy the special assessment requirements, statute four twenty-nine requirements, we'll have to do that at a special council meeting, either on that fifth Tuesday in March or a date close to that, that timeframe. Moving down the list, and we've, we've developed an assessment rule. We provided estimated assessments within the, the notice, the hearing notice that was provided to property owners, based on this methodology that was arrived at in the spring of twenty nineteen. We haven't deviated from this. We are proposing a twenty-eight dollar per lineal foot of frontage, general slash streetscaping assessment. This is similar to the approach on Highway seven back in oh-six, oh-seven, Washington and Adams, which was a county-led project back in twenty-ten. We did credit the property owners for the streetscaping work, basically for half of that assessment that was administered in two thousand and five. So we, we took the estimated assessment of sixty dollars a front foot, decreased it by thirty-two dollars a front foot, then arrived at that twenty-eight dollar number. Right now, we're estimating the values, the assessments associated with the water and sanitary sewer services. You know, for one-to-two inch diameter water services, we're estimating twenty-five hundred dollars. Four-to-six inch, we're estimating thirty-five hundred dollars. There's just a handful of those larger water services out there. And we are installing six-inch diameter sanitary sewer services up and down the corridor. There might be some smaller services that are only, you know, older three, four-inch services, but we'll just upsize those. We'll do a, you know, a Ferco coupler, that'll increase the pipe size at that point. And other than that, yeah, we're still on track for construction, obviously, in the spring of twenty twenty. Things have gotten a little tighter with respect to the bid opening and how quickly things need to be turned around from a contractual standpoint. MINDOT has identified a targeted construction start date of April thirteenth. We'll see if that happens, you know, I think that's probably optimistic, knowing how wet things are and other dynamics, but we'll see what happens. They have identified a completion date of October thirtieth. Likewise, we'll see how, if that's a reality in the end, but that is the contractual date. And with that, I don't know if there's any questions with respect to this information?
Again, this is just from Fifth Avenue?
Yes, Steve, yeah, this is...
North?
Yep. Second Avenue North, yeah, just south of the bridge, Wells Fargo, down to Fifth Avenue South. Yep, that's the, yeah, as everybody's probably aware of, that's the limits of the reconstruction project. South of there, basically down to Airport Road, Cassau, one fifteen, Menards area, that would just be an overlay project, similar to what was done downtown here four, five Just looking, just to give you an idea what the plans look like. Yeah, so these, these are just our sewer and water plants that, that staff put together in-house. So, yeah, we got sanitary sewer main, twelve-inch main, on basically on the center line of the roadway. It's the main with the, the arrows. They're showing the direction of the flow. The dashed line here is the, the trunk water main. All these pipes come off of those, that line work are the, the services. Give or take eighty services respectively for sewer and water. Some of the services, like I mentioned earlier, will just be stubbed into the sidewalk or boulevard area and capped. Some, there's about thirty property owners primarily, well, all of them are on the west side of Main Street, that are serviced from the, the rear, from the alley. So those will just be stubbed if they elect to connect to that in the future. One change that we will revise prior to the, the formal assessment hearing towards the end of March, talking to, to finance staff, is we're not going to do a deferred assessment approach for those utility stubs. It'll actually be what we'll call a future connection fee, and we'll put it in our records as such. And then we won't accrue interest on that, the cost of those services. We hope, I should have mentioned earlier, we hope that the services are twenty-five hundred dollars, give or take, that's an estimated number. We'll review the actual bid prices. If they go up significantly or, or decrease to some degree, we may have to revise that number accordingly. But if it's relatively close, we'll probably just leave it at twenty-five hundred. Hope that's the case.
So can't those are stubbed out to the sidewalk, correct?
Yes, I'll get up to that area, Gary. Yeah, you get up in this area, now we're starting to get north of Second Avenue South along the, the west side of the project. Find a good one here. Yeah, you're starting to get into this area, and that, the water is the, the dash line there, those are stubs. So, and that's the curb stop, the circle, and that curb stop, basically, this is the building front, right at the right-of-way line. This line work here is the concrete curb and gutter, in essence, the edge of the roadway. We're ba, we're basically just trying to split the difference. Put that, that end of that service, seven feet from the building foundation, seven feet from the curb. You know, and in the future, if that needs to be connected to, it can be accomplished without getting into roadway pavement or even curb and gutter. You know, you're going to have to use shoring and, you know, so you're going to have to take some care with your excavation techniques, but you won't, you shouldn't have to replace roadway concrete pavement in the end. Yeah, so those are the plans, I won't get into a lot of detail. You know, we, we've talked quite a bit about construction staging, you know, and I know MINDOT shared this information a fair amount through their process, but four stages. Stage one will be up here on the north end, we'll basically be making the connections within Second Avenue Northwest. And then you get the next two blocks would be stage two in pink there, the next two blocks down to Second Avenue, through Second Avenue would be stage three. I should have mentioned, yeah, we have to do a sanitary sewer connection to allow for bypass pumping, also in stage one. That'll close down the Franklin and, and Second Avenue intersection for probably about three weeks. Once stage three is done, the, the specifications call for the concrete paving operation to be mobilized. So they would come in and then pave, you know, starting from Second Avenue North all the way through Second Avenue South. And as they're paving, more than likely, they're already started on the utility work down here in stage four, the last three blocks.
Has that, has that changed a little bit? I thought there was talk, maybe just paving it all at once, you know?
Yeah, that was, we went back and forth on that, Steve. First of all, we started, well, two years ago, we were talking about two, if not three mobilizations for the paving operation. MINDOT, in an ideal world, would like one. The city, from city staff's standpoint, we, we lobbied for, for two mobilizations, because in my mind, the scariest thing is you allow the contractor to do one mobilization, you know, nothing's going to happen up on these stages for a long time. And then you conceivably get to the end of the construction season, things don't go as well as planned, and you have nothing paved, you know? So there's a given that we should be paved comfortably through Second Avenue, probably in the Labor Day, early, mid-September timeframe, I imagine. And then we'll see what happens from there. That's the staging. Yeah, I can close them all. Yeah, let's see, agreement, plans. I'll share this with council and, and people here, because I know this has been a item of discussion. And we're working with the chamber staff to arrive at a, what we're calling a business signage approach. This has been introduced to MINDOT. They haven't blessed this yet. I know they have some concerns and thoughts, but, and I, I believe we talked a little bit about this many months ago at council, you know, the formal detour that MINDOT's going to post is way out here, Cassau, one fifteen. Down here is, yeah, oops, one away, excuse me, that's School Road. This would be the Highway fifteen, one fifteen, roundabout, Menards right here, obviously. And then your, the detour pushes you all the way around up to Highway seven here, which there will be a temporary traffic signal installed there throughout the project. They did some paving last fall, you probably noticed, to widen some shoulders so they can accommodate some turn lanes when they put that temporary traffic signal in. In the end, we got, we got talking quite a bit at the citizens group and at resource allocation committee, you know, in reality, people trying to get to businesses, whether you're coming from the south and trying to get downtown, or coming from the north and trying to get down to the, the south business district, they're not going to want to follow that long detour all the way out here. I, I've driven it a few times as we were putting this together, to, to go from basically roundabout to roundabout, up to North High on the north end. If you drive through, basically straight through, and have a little luck with the traffic signals as you go, you're looking at about five and a half minutes, five and a half, six minutes. You just do this, you can get up into this, excuse me, I should have said, I didn't go to the roundabout, Highway seven, fifteen corner. So, yeah, taking all, going from there to the roundabout on the south end to the seven and fifteen intersection. If you go up to Adams and get up into this area where we would start funneling vehicles into downtown, off Adams Street, onto a Second, Fifth Avenue and Washington Avenue, which ones are open during any given construction stage, that takes about seven, seven and a half minutes. So it's not a, it's not a whole lot more, and really it boils down to how many signals you hit, you know, as you're coming through on fifteen. You take this and come all the way around, and then go through this intersection, go over to Adams, and come down. It's about fourteen, fifteen minutes, so. Yeah, we're really hoping that we can arrive at a signage approach, we're calling it south business district and downtown business district routing. And this sign convention would, would follow, you know, the cone and such, and Orange Leggery would really follow the, the convention that the chamber's using on other project materials. And the, the chambers also tied up the billboards on the trunk highways on either end. I think there's four of them, Mary said, that she has reserved. So that would play off of this signage convention also, and really try to get people to go to the chambers website, you know, to gain more information to how to get downtown, how to get to the south business district and such. So like I said, this is out there, this is a work in progress, we have to figure out, you know, whether it's accepting from MINDOT's standpoint to put these, these signs within their right-of-way. Obviously, some of them, a fair number of them, have to reside within their right-of-way, thus they have control of whether that happens or not. And we need to talk costs, and then, yeah, we need to talk to the chamber. We're also talking about signs that would basically list businesses adjacent to the downtown city parking lots. Just to give people an idea, when they're coming in off of Franklin and Hassan respectively, up and down, looking at what parking lot they should choose to ax a Chad's business or whomever, at least they'll have some indication, hey, I should park in this one if I want to get to the bike shop. But there's not going to be signage that gets them into the back door from there, but it gets them relatively close. I think that's about it, my standpoint. Does council have any other questions, assessments? I will, after the, the hearing here, I'll step out back and willing to talk assessments with any property owners that have any questions.
All right, we'll open it up for public comment. Just come forward up to the microphone, name and address, please.
I just have a Randy Anderson, five oh six Main Street South. We just had that sidewalk put in, you know, on Fifth Avenue there, and I'll be going to have this, so we've got to pay taxes on that. And now, this is going to be put in there, which somebody was saying, like, through MINDOT, so we wouldn't have to really worry about that, but it looks like, obviously, we have to worry about there being some other assessment thing that we're going to have to worry about paying. You know, and we just got that other one for the sidewalk being put in. Um, I'm just wondering, they're doing all this, uh, because like the, the sewers are in really bad shape and everything, and that water, the piping is really old, and, I mean, exactly why? Were, was this like a grant given that we need to spend the money? What's the...
No, it, there's been a fair amount of study. It's, it, it goes back, you're, you're exactly right, to a large degree, it goes back to the condition of these utilities. Not that necessarily the condition of the utilities are dire, they are over fifty years old. Uh, more importantly, the condition of the roadway beneath the Band-Aid out there is dire. Uh, you know, MINDOT can't, you know, it's starting to show it's, what happens with that, that thin overlay over four winters, so, um, yeah, MINDOT put it in their program, identified it as a, as a project, a priority about ten years ago. Uh, so, the city's been developing our plans with respect to the u- utility, the sewer and water replacements, and, uh, MINDOT's been developing the roadway plans.
What we don't wanna have happen is have MINDOT do the road, and we not touch fifty-year-old utilities.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then, ten years from now, they start going out and we're digging up a whole brand-new road.
That makes sense. Um... Just in my standpoint, it kinda is not the best, because if I'm gonna have to pay more taxes again after this, after that sidewalk got put in, and I gotta worry about assessments for that. Now, there's this coming along as, as well, if I'm gonna have to pay more taxes on that. Um, and then you're talking about, uh, what was that called? I think you're talking about where they can, they can, like, run from a, from the sub-pump or whatever, if they want, into the sewer, is that what the hookups are you're talking about?
No, no, these aren't sump service drainage hookups.
Okay, well...
You may have, which corner of Fifth and Highway fifteen are you on there?
I'm on, uh, on the, well, Southwest.
Southwest, that's what I thought, I wasn't, I wasn't really visiting. Yeah, you, you might have a, did you get a sump pump service on Fifth?
I, I think they put one in, but I, we don't use it. So, I'm, what, you're talking about putting in some kinda...
These are actually your sanitary sewer services and water services I was alluding to.
Okay, but...
So, this is the water coming into your home and...
But, this, you made it kinda, kinda sound like the, these are, like, not everybody's gonna be using?
Yeah, there's some unique circumstances, how some people are serviced by the water today.
It depends on where the service is coming from.
Okay.
The downtown that you're talking?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't be yours, I don't know if you know where your services are, per se.
Not really.
Yeah. And we can look at it after the meeting, or after the discussion here. I'll step out.
Hey, Randy, just one clarification, you know, you mentioned the sidewalk. You weren't, that wasn't part of the assessment. The assessment is the roadway itself.
Well, no, I mean, like, with the sidewalk, uh, okay, with the, the adding in of that sidewalk, sorry, and the whole thing with the road, it, I'm still getting taxed as part of, because I live there, basically.
It's just, it's, it's the roadway, though. The roadway improvement is what the assessment, what you're being charged for.
But this is gonna be another one, right?
Yeah.
And it's gonna be, so it's gonna be...
No, you should get a corner credit, I'll take a look at that. I'll step on back here, I have the worksheet, so more than likely, you've been credited on one of the projects.
Okay.
So, we can take a look at that.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, uh, I'm David Zachmeyer, I'm at 441 Main Street South. Um, I just have a question about, well, maybe a couple of questions, but, um, it says the total estimated city cost of the project is, um, two and a half million dollars, um, and assessables of a half a million for a total of three million dollars, and I'm just wondering how the, um, percentage that's assessable was arrived at?
It is actually, it's not percentage-driven, it's per these rates that I alluded to earlier. So, it's whatever frontage is out there at this rate of twenty-eight dollars a lineal foot, and then the services respectively. In the end, it arrives that the frontage general roadway assessment arrives at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and the utility services arrive at about four hundred thousand.
So, is there any consideration given to, um, residential properties versus business properties, as far as the, the services?
And the waters.
No, the only thing that would differentiate would be sizing, like I alluded to earlier. So, some businesses have a, have a larger water service, so they would pay more.
Um, so, so in our case, the, um, the estimate is almost eight thousand dollars, um, that's a pretty significant, um, financial impact for us. So, um, we don't have eight thousand dollars to just pay out in one lump sum, so what is the, how is that?
The, yeah, the terms of the, uh, and it's, it's in there, but the, uh, the terms of the assessment are over ten years. So, whatever you don't pay at the end of this year, you'll get a final notice, you'll have until mid-November to come in to pay a portion of that assessment or all of it. Uh, whatever isn't paid gets spread over the next ten years on your tax rolls.
Okay.
At the interest rate of probably three percent, give or take, this day and age.
And does the, is the interest paid to the city, or, or, or who earns that interest that's being charged?
Yeah, well, it's, it's the bond rate, which is probably gonna be at about two percent, you know, thankfully, plus one percent per city policy to administer those bonds. Gets you to that three percent.
So, we borrow money to do the project, and that has interest rate that gets charged to it by the lender and...
So, the, so this isn't really the total, then, unless it's paid in full, it would actually be higher than this even?
Yeah, with the interest rate, yeah. Just so you know, and everybody else, you know, that those water and sewer assessments, that's what we've been following, that rate, you know, for quite a few years now. The twenty-five hundred dollars is normal, but as Kent said, it kinda depends a little bit on what the final bids come in, it might get tweaked a little bit.
Yeah, it's been a few years since we've had to do water and sewer service assessments. We had Jefferson back here and Adams, and, but, yeah, you're exactly right. And my hope is, is that the bids are favorable, you know, we've, we hope these are conservative, high numbers, conservatively highly estimated numbers, but, uh, we'll see, and, uh, hopefully we can adjust these downward on the, uh, the notice you've seen in about a month.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, Bob Schlieder with, um, 133 South Main. I guess my question is, uh, existing services from the new stubs, has there been any thought at all, Kent, about options to get them stubbed into the building, that extra six, eight feet?
Yes, uh, yeah, Bob, we've, we've had quite a few conversations about that, uh, with, with MINDOT staff as we were developing this approach. Uh, like I mentioned, we did spell out that scenario here in this notice many months ago, you know, and encouraging people to look at that. Uh, the issue we, we have is MINDOT, we have older buildings, first and foremost, obviously, and we have a very tight construction timeframe. And MINDOT, we, we made a, I think, an educated decision not to push that issue.
So, do you have to the homeowners to work with the contractor, or work with MINDOT while it's open?
Yeah, I, like, we laid out in here, you know, ba- basically what this paragraph says, that, you know, if you're interested in bringing that into your building, whether you just stub it in, or you, you know, reconfigure your interior plumbing to make that connection also, yeah, let us know, the sooner the better, and then we will coordinate, you know, between the property owners, plumber, try to be that intermediate, and the, the utility contractor.
Okay, sounds great.
No, we wanna, if, if people are interested in that, we wanna make that happen. We realize that's a benefit...
Nightmare to do it later.
Yeah, that's a benefit to everybody involved, but we didn't wanna roll the dice and push the issue with, you know, thirty or so of those and...
Exactly.
And not be paving, you know, come October, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Motion to close public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Chad, to close a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, carried. We do them both at once?
Yeah, obviously, if it's the desire of the council to move forward, based on the public comments, you've got two resolutions in front of you tonight, one's ordering the improvement and preparation of plans, and approving the plans and specs, and ordering advertisement for bids.
I'll make a motion to approve both resolutions.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Mary, to approve resolutions numbered 15, 144. Resolution ordering improvements and preparations of plans and specifications, and resolution number 15, 145. Resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Then you'll meet out in the office.
Yep, yeah, just kinda go to the conference room, will you?
All right, Andy, you're up.
Good evening, council, mayor. Um, as you guessed, I'm here tonight to give you the Creeksides and a report on the refuse and compost funds. Um, just diving into it here right away. It's, could be kinda lengthy, so I'm gonna just try to zip along, keep moving here. If you guys have any questions, please interrupt me as I go. All right, so, starting out with, uh, the 2019 year-end report, as I said, for the refuse and compost fund. I wanna start with mentioning our Creekside Soils mission statement, I haven't included this in the past. This is established, I don't recall specifically when, but in the mid-two thousands, shortly after Creekside opened its doors in 2001, and I do feel and believe that we've adhered to this quite well over the years. Um, it reads, "Creekside will provide an environmentally responsible alternative disposing of city and county organics and/or area landfills. This will be done in a manner that is self-sustaining and provides optimum benefits, economic and otherwise, to the residents of Hutchinson. Creekside values innovation, market flexibility, incorporating best business practices, establishing partnerships, meeting or exceeding customer requirements, maintaining good relationships with neighbors, and being recognized as a community asset by the residents of Hutchinson and McLeod County." So, as I said, I think, you know, this isn't something that I necessarily visit often, but I've, it's kind of an unsaid purpose, unsaid goal that we've adhered to over the years. Uh, one thing that came up last year is, and I, again, overlooked it, uh, what is the definition of these two funds? You know, what is the purpose of the, of the services that they provide? So, starting with just the refuse fund, uh, through the refuse fund, the city charges local residents a monthly garbage fee for the collection and disposal of municipal solid waste, otherwise known as MSW, or just simply trash or garbage, and the source-separated compostable material that is disposed of in your ninety-gallon green lid cart. Uh, the garbage fees charged to the residents are used to pay the contracted hauling service, in this case with West Central Sanitation. The landfill disposal charges, Spruce Ridge, on Biskie, and the expenditures for the store separated composting operations at Creekside, including the building improvements and capital equipment purchases. Um, the MSW material, garbage, is disposed of, as I mentioned, at Spruce Ridge and Biskie, um, at the expense of the refuse fund, based on a cost-per-ton contract rate, and I believe the, the 2019 average was rated around sixty dollars a ton. Um, I don't know specifically what the total tonnage of MSW was for 2019, I think it's been in the ballpark of twenty-four, twenty-five hundred ton. So, that disposal expense, along with the collection expense of just the garbage, also comes out of the refuse fund. The source-separated material, organic material, is collected, again, by West Central Sanitation under the contract, and is received at Creekside where it's composted into a soil product and currently being used by city departments. Uh, just taking a look at what we receive at the facility in terms of that source-separated organics, there's several years worth of tonnages reported here, but just taking a look at nineteen, last year we received, received one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine tons of incoming material. Uh, of that hundred, excuse me, one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine, two hundred and thirty-five were screened out after processing and essentially sent to the landfill as reject material or contamination. Um, this, again, kinda going back to the, the MSW rates, at sixty dollars a ton, that two hundred and thirty-five ton, uh, landfill tip fee rate boiled down to a little over fourteen thousand dollars in expense, plus the, the freight and the trucking to, to get it down there. So, uh, as a whole, other than the couple blips earlier on the 2011, 2013 low end, overall, we, for the most part, maintained a fifty-five, excuse me, a fifteen percent diversion rate, otherwise, uh, otherwise known as eighty-five percent recovery, meaning fifteen percent of the incoming tonnage ultimately ends up at the landfill. Um, which is, is, I don't wanna say is an industry standard by, by any means, I mean, zero would be the ultimate goal, but it is, uh, is certainly a respectable diversion rate. Since the facility opened in 2001, a total of thirty-six thousand one hundred and forty-nine tons of source-separated organic material has been tipped and processed at Creekside.
Just something with that, though, that was part of the education...
The solid waste tax exemption, yeah, and that's, I mean, it's, it sounds great, but if we weren't to adhere to that fifteen percent, we would only be taxed on the material that we receive. And I don't remember the exact details of it, but being the, the material generated within the city is being dumped at a city-owned facility, we'd most likely be doubly exempt from it. So, the fifteen percent essentially becomes the goal, but if I recall correctly, it hasn't been an issue in the past, but if I recall correctly, we would be exempt from it regardless if we didn't meet that, that fifteen percent.
But as far as things that get screened out, that's things that are non-organic?
Correct.
So, if people really paid attention to...
There, there is organic matter in there, too. I mean, right now, we allow wood waste material. Well, once we screen that out, I mean, larger particle sizes anyways, anything five-eighths, five-eighths of an inch or larger gets screened out, so, I mean, we want the wood material in the, in the, in the process, but, one, we screen it out, it's so concentrated with plastics and glass and pop cans and what have you, it, it becomes unusable, so, we're ultimately sending organic matter to the landfill because of that.
So, Andy, is it to say that we have an increase in the waste this past year?
In the, in the two hundred and thirty-five tons, yeah, yes.
And that was even after... I, I would say that one disheartening thing was that we had a major campaign this past year.
Yeah, and then I'll, I'll touch on that a little bit later, but that's the, and we knew that going into the Green Corps member, is that wasn't gonna be an immediate, immediate change, that was gonna be a long-term, I shouldn't say long-term, but it'd take a little bit of time for that to hopefully grab hold and, and see some, see some changes, but, uh, the other thing on the, on the increase has to do with moisture, being a wet year, just materials not screening as well. I mean, there's, there's several variables that, that do indeed play into it, so... Uh, one thing we wanna know, too, I'll mention it later on, but the source-separated composting process is something that we're going to be reviewing this year. Um, as you can see, it's been on a rather steady decline over the years, and with the facility and the, the equipment going on twenty years old, we're looking at some potential significant capital expenditures, if we do indeed decide to continue the processing. So, one thing we'll be digging into deeper detail this year with the hopeful intent of having a plan in place by budget season later this year, is do we outsource it? Do we keep the curbside program, but take the material, put it on a truck, and send it elsewhere, let somebody else process it, because, you know, I think, uh, all said and done, we were looking at close to two million dollars in, in capital expenditures, not all necessarily at once, but over time, well, two million dollars on fifteen hundred tons, I don't know if that necessarily make a lot of sense, but, again, that's something we'll be, be looking at moving forward. Um, that's really about it on the source-separated side of things, so, it'll jump right into the compost fund, and again, the definition of the compost fund is Creekside's compost fund provides residents a drop-off site for compostable and reusable waste materials such as logs, brush, yard waste, and clean concrete and blacktop materials at no charge. With these materials, Creekside produces, markets, and distributes bulk-and-bag compost mixtures, as well as a variety of bulk-and-bag colored mulches to local customers and to distributors with a current sales territory of thirteen states from the Midwest to the Intermountain West. Uh, the bagged products are sold under three labels, the Splinter Girl brand, the Creekside brand, and the Wonder Blend brand. Creekside also supplies horticultural materials along with aggregates, which would be the bit con, uh, produced from the crushing of the concrete and blacktop received to various city departmental projects at reduced costs. So, again, looking at the incoming materials, I mean, without Creekside's bag sales, or with Creekside's basic bag sales, we wouldn't have material to bag if we didn't have the incoming materials, so, um, some of these slides, I should've mentioned, too, some of these slides will, very different, very little... So, some of these slides, I should have mentioned, too, some of these slides will very different, very little bit from what was originally included in the packet, just some additional information. But in 2019, we received a grand total of 13,446 tons of material, which includes both yard waste and wood waste. Of that 13,000, 4,289 of it came from the city of Hutchinson, whether that be residential, city departments, local contractors, what have you. So, looking down, down below on the bottom where the incoming materials by type and generator of that grand total of that 13,446, 53% of that is yard waste by ton. Forty-seven of it, 47% of it by, is wood, wood waste. So, the city of Hutch is a 32, contributes 32% of the total or generates 32% of the total with 1,500 tons of yard waste, 2,800 tons of wood waste. McLeod County comes in with 22% of the total, 1,750 tons of yard waste, 1,150 tons of wood waste, and that primarily is coming from the municipal compost sites located throughout the city. I'm sure we do have, you know, county residents bringing it into us, but we don't check IDs to determine if they're city residents or not. But the majority of that, of that tonnage is coming from the Stewarts, Browns, Glencos, Plato, Silver Lake, Winston-Luister Prairie. City of St. Cloud is the, the largest generator, coming in at 39% of the total. There, we received 3,890 tons of yard waste, whereas it's 1,350 tons of wood waste. And then the city of Wilmer coming in, contributing 7% to the total with 1,000 tons of wood waste. I'll back up here. One thing I just want to mention, Steve had pointed out earlier on, the residual tons listed down on the bottom in, in red primarily have been zero. I throw this in there, yep, it's maybe somewhat irrelevant in terms of the zero tonnage, but I also want to include it saying that from the yard waste and wood waste materials, 0% of that, 0 tons of that material is going to the landfill. We do screen the material, we do have rejects, we do have wood particles, rock, a little bit of garbage, but it's clean enough that we can reintroduce it back into the system. So, as time moves on, that number's gonna change. That number's going to start to rise. The, the reject material that we are introducing becomes so, is starting to become concentrated in the materials, in the, in the fresh incoming materials, so it's not quite there yet, but getting close to borderline affecting the quality of our, of our finished products.
What, sorry?
So, eventually, I don't know, there might be some as soon as this year, but for surely next year into, into the following.
So, what would we do with that?
That, we're exploring options. That's certainly something that we don't want to send to the landfill, because a lot of it is stone, it's mixed with wood, there's a little bit of garbage. There is equipment out there that will do some separation. They, they, one, one machine is called a classifier. It'll separate the stone from the rock, and then there's a vacuum on it that'll suck up the loose, the loose plastic. I mean, it's something that we wouldn't consider purchasing because of the price tag on it, but we can certainly look at renting it. So, the options are being explored in, in that regard, for sure. So, what do we do with all that material? Well, we, well, we bag it. Looking at the bag sales volume, the middle, middle column here, 2019, obvious dip in sales. We closed out 2019 with 1,276,407 bags, down from 1,455,250 in 18. From what we can gather, I mean, there's two large factors behind this. One is essentially the weather. Late snowstorms last spring shortened the window of opportunity for the, not so much the growing season, but just the, the gardening season. The other main, main factor behind this is one of our larger customers from, they're based out of Sioux City, Iowa. They typically had picked up, took delivery in the fall of the year, whether it be October, November, doesn't matter. They didn't do that last year. They instead are gonna be picking up this spring. So, that was a, yeah, give or take 100,000 bags worth of sales. We didn't lose, but certainly weren't accounted for in 19, but will, we will realize them now, again, in, in 2020. So, looking at the 2020 estimates, you maybe ask, okay, well, if it's 100,000 bags that we lost, why is it only going up 20,000 to 1,293? Well, there's another customer, a private label customer, that notified us late last year that they'll be pulling out. And that generated, that was about 140,000 bags worth of business. So, they're pulling out, and then the difference between them leaving and this other customer coming back in gives us that, that slight increase, plus projected increases amongst other prod, customers. So, looking at what kind of material is needed for those bagging volumes, for those bag volumes. 2019, we packaged just over 39,000 yards worth of material, down from just under 44,000 yards worth of material in 18. Just to put this in perspective, Creekside has the ability, more so just the real estate, to produce about 30,000 yards worth of material. Pretty much a split 15,000 yards of compost and 15,000 yards of wood waste, with the remaining balance needing to be procured or acquired from, from outside vendors. And this is kind of, to a degree, reaffirms the, the weather impact. This is a comparison, 2018 to 2019. Bag volume breakdown, the Creekside brands versus the private label brands, not a lot of change. If you look at the 2019 on the right, 68.2% of total bags sold were Creekside brands, whereas back in 2018, 110,000 bag difference, but were 67.4%. So, the overall makeup of our business has, has stayed consistent. Some 2019 mentionables, as just mentioned. Bag sales were hindered in 2019 due to the wet year and the, and the customer, one larger customer not picking up in, in the fall. Bit con sales far exceeded projections. We closed out 2019 selling just over 31,000 ton, whereas in 2018, it was just under 21,000 ton. So, an additional 10,000 ton in bit con sales for 2018. That is sale price of $8.50, $85,000 in additional revenue. We hosted a Minnesota Green Corps member through August. As Matt mentioned, you know, the, the primary focus of that individual was to, was educational outreach on the curbside source separated program, essentially educating residents on the do's and don'ts, what they can and cannot throw in the green cart. I know there towards the end, he was actually doing door-to-door, a door-to-door campaign. So, that's something that hopefully we start to see some improvement, more improvement moving forward, but it will, it will take a little bit of time for that to hopefully fully, fully engage. The compost fund, I should have mentioned, hired an additional equipment operator last April. New compost turner was acquired in May, and we completed the redesign of the Wonder Blend logo and bags. This original design, I don't recall the, the specific date it rolled out, but it was, again, early to mid 2000s. So, needless to say, the, the design was modernized, given a more sleek, a little more professional look. From what I've, the research I've done, logos and/or designs should be refreshed, give or take, every seven years. So, I think we were, we were well due. 20, we're working on, in 2020, we'll be working on the Creekside brand.
It looks like a Bonnie Moore drawing.
It is.
The famous cows.
Yep, Molly.
Yep.
So, a quick look at the, at the financials here. We're gonna probably, probably more so, I will more, more so focus on the 2019 prelim column. Just to state here ahead of time, the, being preliminary numbers, revenues are pretty well established and will not move. The, the expenditures could fluctuate a lump, a little bit here in the next couple weeks into the next, I wouldn't say month. I don't know when finance closes that out, but there are some scraggling invoices still coming in with 2020, or 2019 invoices. So, looking at the refuse fund initially, year-end closed out with 1,291,096 in revenue, which came in, as you can see, about $51,000. I had a budget. Expenditures came in at 1,347,494 dollars, below 20, the 2019 budget expended, expenditures, excuse me, with a net revenue of a loss of 56,9394. I should have mentioned, too, the, the year-end expenditures total, that 1,347 does include a depreciation, it does include the capital, it does include any kind of long-term debt, and then also the, the transfers out. So, to, to understand, I guess, what those numbers, those values are, I did, I did list them here separately. Depreciation at 146,000, capital outlay at 146,000, and the transfer out at 55,000. Since 2010, since the transfer started to the tree disease infestation mitigation fund, $550,000 has been transferred through 2019. Look at the compost fund, 2019 preliminary year-end revenues came in at 2,546,543 dollars. Not a bad year, not a great year, but a, an okay year. We obviously, we were anticipating, budgeted only 2 million, just over 2,500,000, but based on the 2018 numbers, we were, we were hoping for a better, we typically budget a little conservative on the revenue side. But we did meet budget. We came in 40, $42,000 ahead of budget, but we did come in, oh, $50,000 behind 2018's revenues. Year-end expenditures, again, same thing, couple scraggling invoices, so that number could change a little bit moving forward here. But it came in at 2,705,790 dollars. A good chunk of that, as you can see down below in the capital outlay, we had 80, 80,000 budgeted, ended up being 138. A good, a good portion of the addition, additional expense was a bagging line improvement. It essentially became a, it was a, a safety hazard that was pointed out by our safety, the city's safe, safety consultant. And we worked pretty swiftly to move on that and get that problem corrected. Part of that, we were, we applied for an OSHA grant, OSHA safety grant, and we were awarded 10,000, a $10,000 grant to help pay for that. So, aside from the, the decreased in bag sales, it still turned out to be a relatively good year for Creekside. Obviously, the bit con sales helped. There were some sales of assets, fixed assets, whether it be through trade-in or outright sales of some equipment that counted for, I believe, was $65,000, the additional 85,000 on the bit con sales and a couple other minor revenue increases. But all in all, turned out relatively well, all considering. Gross profit margin is staying relatively consistent. 2019 budget came in, we came in with a 31.1% gross margin, ended up at 32.4. I don't know that that would necessarily fluctuate here through any additional expenditures, expenditures coming in, but for the most part, staying really relatively consistent. Depreciation, $220,000, 2019, the capital outlay of 138, 122, and the transfer out of 110,000. To date, since 2009 through 2019, just over a million dollars has been transferred to the general fund from the compost fund.
It's really when you take into account appreciation, appreciation, we have positive cash flow.
On both, right.
That would be good to note that in the future slides, just cash flow was actually positive.
Sure.
If it, whatever it is.
Yeah, right, yeah. And I, and I guess that's the purpose. I can just flat explain that or say that versus letting you lead to your own conclusion. But yeah, you're exactly right. So, the, one of the last things that Steve had mentioned here over the weekend is, it just kind of lists out some goals for Creekside. And, and there's multiple goals that we have internally. There's, as far as manufacturing operational goes. But two of the, two of the big things that we definitely want to work on for 2020 is, as mentioned earlier, establish a plan for the future of the source separated organics material processing, whether that be outsourcing the processing or investing the significant dollars. The intentions are to hire a consultant to come in and review our operation, spend the time, reach out to other operations, other cities, and gather that, that data, put it together and give us, give us some options. So, like I said, hopefully, we haven't, we haven't reached out, we haven't established who we were gonna, who we are going to use yet, but hopefully, hopefully, we'll have that done by, by late summer. The other one is, is kind of a more so internal, and it's definitely an ongoing, but with the, the bagging line upgrade last fall, this is something that we want to definitely take pride in. Increase the bagging line bags per hour production rate for soil products by 10% per hour, and the mulch products by 5% through minimized downtime and machine innovations and upgrades. This equipment's going on 20 years old, not necessarily an excuse. Our preventive maintenance plans are good, but it's just the overall, the overall structure of the machine. We have, I don't want to say more and more issues, but it's getting a little more tired every, every day, every year. As recently as five years ago, we were pushing with, flirting with that 900, maybe just over 900 bags an hour on the soil products. And mulch products have stayed, that actually, that 473 BPH bags per, per hour in 2019 is actually a pretty good number as far as industry standards go. So, we threw a 5% increase on that. What that would mean in terms of the operation is if using the 29, 2019 bag sales volumes and the, the production hours, if we were to obtain or meet this goal, we would save or shave 150 hours of production time off the bagging line. Now, that doesn't necessarily sound like a lot, but it's basically a month's worth of work. And now, that doesn't mean that the beggar would be shut down for a month. It would just minimize how much two-shift work we actually do. Last spring, we ended up basically from, what was it, April 1st, maybe tail end of, of March, but April 1st through Memorial Weekend of two shifts non-stop, just to stay ahead of the demand and then fight the weather and the snowstorms on top of it. But that's what I have.
Was curious, Sandy, with, I don't know if you saw the article in the Tribune, they talked about how that St. Paul's central heating is struggling a little bit because they're not as efficient anymore compared to some of the other renewable energy sources. But then also, St. Paul, and there's a lot of cities that are sending wood waste there. They actually burn wood waste to help generate electricity and steam, I guess, right?
To heat downtown St. Paul.
So, again, some of these other cities are sending ash trees, you know, with that. And, and now they're questioning, you know, what, do they have the capability to take all that now?
They don't. No. The, the dynamics in the mulch industry have changed drastically in the last couple of years. A, you have the ash borer coming on. B, two large biomass facilities, one in Benson and one in, I think it was Grand Rapids, shut down. I, I don't know all the details of why, but it sounded like subsidies were cut. The Benson plant, I have no idea on the total tonnage, but they were a large consumer of wood waste biomass. Well, all these municipalities, thus, thus how we got our foot in the door with the city of Wilmer. St. Cloud is another one. That material was at one time going to Benson. Well, there's no value in this material to anyone now because there's nowhere to go with it. And we actually, we, we did work with the Candy Ohio County landfill. At the landfill itself, they received yard waste and wood waste. In the past, we've, we've worked with them taking their wood waste. Well, I heard through the grapevine here, just late last year, that they were permitted by the DNR and the MPCA. Because of the expense to grind this material and haul it away, they were permitted to burn it, which was rather shocking to see. But I think that's...
Like in an incinerator or just?
Light the pile on fire.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, I'm assuming they're gonna do it in smaller increments so they don't light the whole countryside on fire.
More of that, because kind of where I was going with this is, are we thinking about what's gonna happen here? I don't know what our volume for mulch is, and, but when our mulch does finally get here and in the county and...
We may be able to be more selective because either, you know, as we go out, you know, in terms of Creekside's operation, you know, we go out and do grinding, say, in St. Cloud in the city of Wilmer because we don't generate enough here. I would, dependent upon the volume we would, we would see from the ash borer, I would probably start to cut out some of those others because of the freight expenses.
Okay.
And that was part of the reason the landfill decided to burn, is they were paying somebody to grind it, and they were paying somebody to haul it away, so they were kind of getting double, double whammied, which ended in quite a few dollars a yard. I'm surprised it lasted as long as it did.
So, do we send anything to St. Paul?
We don't.
We used to.
Yeah, long time ago. But they're too, because of the market changing, they're inundated. They're, they turn, they're turning vendors away because they, there's more, more than they can do with, more, more material there than they have a need for, I should say.
The other question I had, we still have the source separated compost that we really don't have a use for. One thought I was wondering about was, you know, out at Hatz, they started building a berm. Could we use that material blended with some other, maybe it's dirt or clay or whatever, to, to build that up more?
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't know that I would put 100% of that material in a, I don't know how tall the berm, what the berm would be, I don't know, it'd go 10 feet... Yeah, I don't know that I would put a hundred percent of that material in a, I don't know how tall the, the berm would be, I don't know, I'd go ten feet deep with it, but I would certainly blend it in with less than ideal other materials to, you know, just formulate a, a good growing media.
You don't have any other use for right now, right?
At the moment, no, the forestry department uses, and I, I don't know the numbers off the tip of my tongue, but a minimal amount annually to backfill around his new trees. I know John mentioned earlier, you know, using that on, on the, this grant dollar project that they were awarded, but it's rather insignificant to the, to the volume we produce, and we only produce, it's in that twelve hundred yards a year ballpark of that material, so I mean, yes, it's taking up space on our site, but it's, it's not like we have tens of thousands of yards of it either.
Gotcha.
So, we certainly, we can talk and figure out a home for it without a doubt.
I don't, you know, it seemed like we were gonna build that berm to do some landscaping and screening and stuff, but then it never really, you know, got.
The one south, south, in between, say, Hats and Hutch Coop?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know what John's plans are, their plans are, but yeah, it's relatively short, doesn't do much for fencing.
Thanks, Andy.
Andy, you planning any open houses?
We did, uh, I don't have anything on the books, we did, that was a year and a half ago already, September of eighteen was the last one we did. If, if you would like us to do something soon, I know prior to that, it was, I don't even remember what it was, it's been quite a while. But I know we would definitely do some things differently of the next go-around, I know the last one was on a, I think, a Thursday night. We had forty, fifty people show up, whereas I try to get it moved to the weekend and figure out a time of the year where there's not all sorts of activities going on.
Just to get the public awareness out there about, you know, about, you know, even kinda keeping the, you know, separating things.
Right.
You know, this.
Yeah, the, the, the guests that we had on this recent one, they, I mean, they were, I mean, some of them kind of understood the operation to begin with, but a lot of them were, you know, taken aback on how this all works and the contamination and how this really impacts the, the final product, so yeah, there's absolutely value in doing those.
Is there any more ongoing education that's going on?
Right now, nothing, the, the Green Corps member basically established, or set up a, a realm of different Facebook posts and other information that, along with the calendar and when to post it, that's basically what we're following up with right now.
Send something out just.
Recent, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then, and again, too, I mean.
Facebook, yeah.
A discussion for another day, but depending upon where we go with the processing, you know, I think it would be a, a good idea to look at potentially bringing on, not necessarily another full-time staff member, but somebody that specifically will focus on just that program. You know, whether it be part-time, halftime, it doesn't matter, but something to, to throw on the radar.
Well, if you, I know you're busy, but if you'd have time, I'd like to see you have something, you know, an open house. What's everybody else think?
Every year is worth it, or every few years, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk about that, sure.
Anything else for Andy? Thanks for the good job you do.
All right, thank you.
Unfinished business, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty dash eight-ten, ordinance reviewing chapter one eleven and chapter one twenty-three of the Hutchinson City Code. Mr. Sabora?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and hopefully this is the last time we'll be talking about this for a while at least.
Oh, come on, no more.
We'll ask Dan sometime, all right?
You would think.
But, uh.
What's this about?
Feels like that, love, right? But anyway, this is the second reading of this combined food vendor and transient merchant license. No changes have been made since the first reading, and I'd ask that you approve it.
I'll make a motion to do that.
I will second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you very much.
Authorizing advertisements forbid for replacement of compost screener at Creekside. Good to see you, Andy, it's been a while.
Good evening again. As mentioned in the board action forum, Creekside staff is seeking to replace one of its screening plants. Um, this particular unit is a two thousand model deck screener, and in the early two thousands, it was the primary screening plant. Um, as our operation grew, especially with the City of Minneapolis material coming onboard, the city acquired a trommel, excuse me, a trommel screener, which kinda kicked this one to the back curb, so to say. We're, in the last few years, I didn't look before I came down, but that machine's been utilized very little to the tune of maybe just a couple hundred hours, literally in the last probably five, six years. Um, main reasons behind that is it's an electric, a diesel over high electric machine, so we've had electrical issues ongoing as far, as long as I can remember, the machine sits outside. Um, but the biggest component behind it is the, the production rates. The deck screener does a good job as far as screening, nothing necessarily any better than what a trommel screener could do, but uh, the production rates are about half. We do, give or take forty, forty-five yards an hour through the deck screener, and we're in some cases upwards of a hundred yards on a trommel screener.
So, what's the deck it just raises on top?
Yeah, on, on the, the pictures aren't the greatest, I apologize for that, but the orange machine on top is, is the machine that we have, not the exact one in the picture, but yeah, the material runs up on top and it's a vibrating deck. That sifts the material out, it's, it's more so an aggregate machine than it is a, a compost machine. Yeah, I wasn't involved in the purchase back in the day, so I couldn't tell, exactly tell you why, why they went that route, but.
There was some talk about bagging rock way back.
Yeah, there was, and that, that conversation does come up from time to time, but.
Maybe this.
Quickly ends because they wreak havoc on our, on our bagging line. So, what we're looking at doing is, um, just basically replacing that machine, I don't know, at this point, we're, we're undecided, I know I'd mentioned on the board action forum, looking at a trade-in value to include on the, in the trade specs of the machine, I don't know that, just to keep it in even playing field, I've, we've ran into it into the past, in the past, where one vendor will have a ridiculous sale price, but then they'll have a ridiculous trade value, whereas the next one has a reasonable sale price and a dismal, so long story short, potentially, most likely gonna look at pulling the trade portion out of the bid spec and just sell it directly outright at auction, after the fact, to keep it apples to apples, so to say. Um, one thing I, in talking with Andy Reid this morning, I had mentioned in here that cash reserve is relatively healthy within the compost one, staff's intention to be purchase, purchase it with cash on hand, um, he did mention this morning that we will explore financing if interest rates are feasible or favorable, we'll, we will take a look at it. So, that, that portion, it would be undecided, but there again, too, that would be worried about later as, as we come forward with a request for approval of purchase, providing, we seek or gain approval tonight.
So, two of them just helps efficiency?
Yeah, the one, the, our, the operation has changed. We're probably more so within the last five years, but definitely within the last ten, excuse me, the other, the other way around, in the last ten years, but definitely the last five, as far as our mulch operations. We screen all of our mulch material before it's re-ground and colored, just to pull out fines, inert material, dirt, gives you a better colored mulch, minimizes the water you need to use when coloring and, and lightens the, lightens the load, the, the weight per yard. So, what really happens is a lot of the times, you make hay while the sun shines. And a lot of these materials, we have the source separated compost, which is not necessarily a big batch, but it comes, it comes to be fit, so to say, at one time. Same time as the yard waste compost, the same time as the black dirt, and then potentially same, same time as the mulch, so we'd be able to, to master several screening operator, two screening operations at the same time. And then, the other, the other part of it would be, on the, on a newly acquired machine, we'd come in with different screen sizes. Right now, the, the trommel screener that we use on the mulch is sized for the compost, which is a little bit larger than what we would wanna use on the mulch screening. You know, on the mulch screen, we just wanna pull out the fines, fines, well, we're sized a little too big, that we're actually pulling out wood particles, good wood, that would benefit in the, in the finished product, so we would spec it to include a smaller screen size for just the wood and then the larger size for, for the compost side of things, or dirt.
Those changeable or?
Yeah, one of them, one of the, the, the green machine is, is the machine, we, we currently own a McCloskey, so we're very familiar with, with that piece of equipment, but the, the McCloskey is set up to where you would basically pull out the whole drum and put in a different drum with the screen sizes on it, whereas the, the Vermeer machine, the yellow machine, you actually change the panels on, you leave the drum in the machine, but you would change the screen panels with the drum still installed. And they actually came out and just demoed that last week, and in a matter of an hour and a half, they had all the screens changed on it, so that's, that's the reason, I mean, we're gonna, as far as the, the bid specs would, would be written, they would be written wide enough to include both of these machines and it wouldn't boil down to price.
What's the life expectancy of a machine like this?
We go, we go twenty, twenty years.
Twenty years.
So, the, and then, obviously, coincidentally, to a degree, the, the orange Bibby Tech will be twenty years old, it is twenty years old this year. The McCloskey machine that we own is a ten, is a two thousand ten, you know, we do have some maintenance, maintenance expenses along the way, but we easily anticipate another ten years out of that machine, if not even more, I mean, they're pretty, pretty simple machines, I mean, they're hydraulics and a diesel engine, that's really about it, and then obviously some bearings and conveyor belts, but overall, they're pretty simple machines.
Motion to approve. I'll second it. Motion by Steve, second by myself. Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
Resolution number one five, one four six, resolution approving Truck Highway fifteen Main Street Project Cooperative Construction Agreement and preliminary schedule. Z I.
Aye.
Aye.
Exactly, schedule I, I guess, whatever that means. But anyways, that's what they've been calling them for years. Uh, yeah, like, uh, mentioned earlier, uh, and we touched on at the last council meeting, MINDOT has, uh, uh, gotten back to us with respect to our comments, uh, and thoughts from the draft of the agreement document and the, uh, uh, the Schedule I, which is the cost-sharing arrangement between the state and, and the city. Uh, sent out a packet of information to you earlier today, there's a lot there, and, yeah, that's just a, a fraction of the back and forth and phone calls and all the different MINDOT staff involved and everything else, but I think we got to a spot where I'm, from the city's standpoint, content uh, with their response, unfortunately, they did not provide the final construction estimate, albeit, I, I believe I have a good idea what, uh, the total number is based on past estimates and, and working some math backwards, uh, within that cost, uh, participation arrangement, Schedule I. Um, so, yeah, unless council has any specific questions, I guess the biggest other thing to note, and maybe if you looked at that information and they handed out a few packets, uh, hard copies of all that information, but within the agreement itself, they did, uh, put in some verbiage, uh, uh, in, uh, in regards to the pedestrian crossing that MINDOT has decided to install, uh, near the Echo Drive and, uh, I'll call it just the Echo Drive area, and then it skews across over to Brown Street, that area, and yeah, that's, uh, their ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, uh, staff, uh, they really felt they wanted to have a crossing in that area. They had a, there was a long distance between, you know, marked cross, not marked crossings, but accessible crossings. Uh, basically, you're, you're from South Grade Road on the, the south end up to, I think it's Sixth Avenue South, if I remember right, on the north end, Sixth or Seventh. But, uh, anyways. Yeah, uh, MINDOT district staff is not a huge fan of it, I'm certainly not a huge fan of it, thus, we wanted some verbiage in the agreement that called out that situation, uh, so you, so potentially attorneys, anybody for that matter, couldn't read into that agreement that the city had potential liabilities, responsibilities associated with that crossing.
Any comments on that, Mark? Into that?
Oh, I think that the language that got added really helps, uh, give some measure of protection for the city, I mean, we have a couple of things going for us with regard to potential claims, first of all, it's the project and this crosswalk in particular is all in the state highway right of way, and with this new language that, uh, Kent was able to get added, they're taking responsibility for all the maintenance for that crosswalk, so that certainly helps protect the city and so the state has a couple of different immunities that protect it, and because we're furthering the project on their behalf, we'd also enjoy those immunities, so there's really little chance of any liability on the city's part.
The other part is actually somebody might get hurt, so.
Yeah, I live near there, and that is a horrible place to put a crosswalk, I mean, I, I don't understand what they're thinking, the sightlines are terrible and it's, the speeds are high.
Are they gonna reduce the speed to, Ken?
They're not even gonna sign it or stripe it, it's basically just to provide access of pedestrian ramps and then ramps across the median.
So, ramps to accommodate wheelchairs?
Yep.
Without a crosswalk or it marked? I wanna put whoever thinks.
No, trust me, this, this has been beaten up and by myself, by other MINDOT district staff, and yeah, it's, and we do a lot of things, and I won't say a whole lot, but we do a lot of things on the ADA front nowadays that cost a lot of money within projects and, you know, yeah, there's a fine line from doing the right thing and going to an extreme sometimes, and I think this is.
Safety factor here.
And this is going to an extreme that, uh, somebody feel, feels is necessary evidently.
Did, did you invite them out to?
Oh, yeah, they stood out there, I know, I think on multiple occasions.
You should put them in a wheelchair and get them to cross that intersection in the winter, yeah, right, unbelievable.
I'd ask Kent, could we, you know, I know we're gonna pass this, but just add a statement that we don't agree with this, um, just so it's noted, and I know Kent's.
Yeah, you could do that, I mean, I would just say, do that, it, that statement won't be within the agreement.
Right.
Trust me, I, we had to beg and plead to get that one sent in that agreement, but, uh, with MINDOT central office staff, but, yeah.
Proving the agreement and making that statement.
You can just pass. Put it into the record here this evening, yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the agreement.
Okay with making a statement, or that's a second piece to it?
Yeah.
What would work the best that way?
I think it should be part of the motion.
So, I don't know how you wanna word it, but that intersection is a horrible, or that crosswalk is a horrible idea.
We don't agree.
Due to safety concerns, I mean.
Due to safety, that's good.
Wordsmith it as you wish.
Did that kinda cover it, Mark, then?
We'll take care of it.
Thank you very much.
You'll put it politically correct.
Call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Could I make one comment on this project and?
Yep.
The pillar project was included in that Schedule I, it's just the construction of the pillars, the, with the brickwork and stuff. The artwork was separate. The num, the price for the pillars is, that's included in the Schedule I is significantly more than what we were led to believe, you know, earlier in the discussions. So, with that, and, um, I've been working on the grant, you know, uh, application, and the public arts was gonna be reviewing that, but really don't wanna go to all the work of, uh, that grant's middle without knowing that, that price is actually gonna work. So, what we're planning on now is just holding off, waiting to see what those bids, that part of the bid comes in, and then go from there, there's another, uh, uh, grant opportunity later on that we could apply for, and then, uh, checked with SMOCK, checked with the artists, and everybody's okay with that. But we'll just see how it comes out, what the numbers are. okay with that, uh, but we'll just see how it comes out, what the numbers are like, so I just wanna let you know, the council know about that.
All right, thanks, Steve. Um, City Constitution to the McLeod County Northeast Ring Road, alternative study phase two.
This is in your packet, but I'll just put up the one pager here that... Uh, the consultant, SRF consulting, put together for the, uh, for county staff when they presented the phase one, uh, study of the northeast ring road, uh, concept, and really the phase one work, uh, was focused on what they called the traffic evaluation, uh, basically was there a origin and destination study, uh, similar to what the city did in conjunction with the state and the county, well, probably already fifteen years ago, on our trunk highways, entering and exiting the, uh, the community, but what was arrived at? Let me pull up on the numbers here. Basically, they arrived at a count, um, and this is both directions, uh, of vehicles, uh, you know, both commercial and, uh, passenger vehicles, and, and they arrived at that using what they call streetlight data nowadays, and it's basically data that's available, whether you like it or not, uh, you know, that, uh, through your GPS, uh, system of your vehicle, and, and obviously there's some percentages assigned and some math to this and a little bit of science that, you know, not every vehicle, uh, has a navigational system, uh, and, uh, so they, but they are, they're, they're confident that this data set, that's pretty readily available now, arrives at the better, uh, you know, origin, destination vehicular traffic flow data than, uh, you know, tracking license plates or doing physical counts or, you know, things of that nature, it's a, this, this data set's a longer span of time, so with, with that in mind, uh, what the county arrived at, it was, uh, the, the north-south movement, you know, vehicles, uh, that would utilize, you know, this, uh, you know, this, uh, ring road, the orange line up there, the two arrows there, uh, that are making, currently making the north-south movement, uh, equates to twelve hundred seventy vehicles a day, uh, the vehicles that are currently doing the, uh, north-to-southeast movement, so North Highway fifteen down to, uh, trunk highway twenty-two, uh, three hundred and fifty, and then likewise, uh, northeast, uh, a few less. Making that movement. But anyways, uh, hundred and fifty-five, uh, so you add up all, all those numbers, you arrive at approximately eighteen hundred, uh, vehicles a, a day wi, with about two hundred and twenty of those vehicles being trucks, uh, just over twelve percent. Uh, this is similar to the counts that currently exist out on the southwest ring road that was built, oh, it's probably been almost, uh, twelve, fourteen years ago now that the second phase was, was completed, um, yeah, and that's really what, what's summarized here, and, you know, on that basis, uh, the, the county, uh, during a county board workshop, uh, you know, determined that this is feasible and that they wouldn't like to move on to phase two, uh, to further investigate the, uh, alignment alternatives, uh, the county's, county staff did some work on that front about six, seven years ago, probably now, yeah, about the time we were doing our transportation plan, so shortly before twenty-twelve, uh, so they, they would dust off that effort and then SRF would, uh, take it to the next level and, you know, re, refine previous alignment alternatives, uh, develop some visualization, uh, drawings, concepts, uh, update some cost estimate, mating efforts, uh, I know that's, that dynamic has changed dramatically in the last seven years, uh, and then you're, you're looking at, uh, the evaluation matrix, that gets into, uh, the environmental work and, uh, issues that exist along, you know, specific corridors, wetlands, you know, vegetation, uh, suspect soils and such, uh, then you, you'd wanna do a little bit of public engagement, you know, obviously get some input on potential alignments and then, you know, document your findings, ultimately the hope is you would, I think they, the drawing that the county had, it probably had about ten, you know, alignments on it, it was spaghetti, I guess, you know, but, uh, take that, those ten alignments down to two or three, and then that really would set up for the, the third phase, which would be the full environmental process that's required of, by the federal government if you utilize federal funding to build your project, so, which more than likely a project of this nature, uh, to the county, they would probably utilize their, their federal dollars, uh, you also get into the magnitude of the project, you, obviously the county has a sales tax now, you know, to generate, uh, transportation funding, but this project would still trigger more than likely the environmental process that would be required in the, the third phase. With that, uh, way on the bottom here is the cost of, uh, phase two, uh, just a hair over fifty-nine thousand dollars, the phase one effort was just over seventeen thousand dollars, we contributed eight thousand dollars, not exactly sure how we arrived at that, but a few years ago, but, uh, uh, you know, so roughly just short of half of that effort, uh, per discussions with, with county staff, they would like the city to contribute, you know, and that's historically, we've, uh, had that arrangement, whether it was the southwest ring road and all the effort that went into developing that project many years ago, uh, that O and D study, uh, about ten years ago that the city led, that I just mentioned, you know, in conjunction with the state and the county, uh, the state and the county, you know, participated and, and helped us defray that cost at that time, so, uh, yeah, what the, uh, county's looking for or hoping or willing to contribute is fifteen thousand dollars of the fifty-nine thousand.
Has it been talked about what the estimate cost of building that ring road would be?
Nope, that's what they wanna arrive at.
But there's not been any-
That's the million dollar question.
But there's not been any, like, broad numbers thrown out?
There's broad numbers, but I don't, at this point, I'm not gonna venture a guess, it's really dependent on the alignment, it's dependent on what has to be done at the intersection of Highway seven, you know, that's a big factor in this next step, is analyzing that, that intersection.
Not about.
More than likely probably is, would be the, uh, the solution, but, uh, you know, that would be identified, that dramatically impacts the cost if you have to build a roundabout, I mean, that's a million and a half dollar, you know, issue right there, and, and really it's, you know, a lot of this goes back to public input, they're gonna identify corridors, all these corridors are gonna have different trade-offs, uh, and really the, what impacts costs is, when you're doing the project like this, is wetlands and suspect soils, and if your alignment is going through wetlands and bad soils, your costs go up in a hurry, is what it boils down to, if you can arrive at a line, an alignment that doesn't do that, should be more cost effective.
And so the way I read it, the county wants to do this to accommodate two hundred trucks a year, or a day, go, that, and they don't wanna go through downtown Hutchinson, is that the deal?
Yeah, I don't think that's solely the, the approach, but I think it's more to have a good transportation, transportation system develop over the course of time, you wanna provide alternatives, and if you don't start building your system to provide alternatives, you end up with a bad transportation system over time, is, and, and you look at even, you know, Highway seven, you know, that was built back in oh-six, oh-seven, you know, almost fifteen years ago, you know, you could debate, well, are four lanes necessary? You know, did that have to be built to that degree? But you have one opportunity to look into the future and make a decision, you know, and build something to a capacity or on a, a corridor level, and, and I think really what's hap, we, we hear from truckers, you know, the county hears from the freight community, uh, there's a lot of traffic signals through town, you know, here in Hutchinson, there's no debating that, and two roundabouts, uh, you know, freight community isn't, they're not a fan of that, and I'm sure you've spoken to a few of them, and, yeah, I think you just wanna provide alternatives, uh, and that's what the goal of this would be, this isn't gonna happen, and, yeah, I mean, it, the study process, the environmental, you know, study effort, I mean, this is a, a decade out, it, probably at the very least, uh, albeit the city does, or the county, excuse me, does have a funding source now that's dedicated, and they're gonna have more resources to deliver projects like this, so maybe it's not as far out as a person imagines.
I mean, if trucks wanna avoid the lights, though, can't they just go down Adams currently?
Yep, I don't know if we necessarily want them on Adams from a city transportation system standpoint, or could defray that traffic over the course of time.
But they're estimating like eighteen hundred vehicles a day.
Yep.
You know, so it's more than two hundred and fifty trucks, it's, uh-
Uh, the freight in there, they're-
Yeah.
Commercial, two-twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, there's more vehicles than just the-
Right.
The, the freight, the truck traffic, yeah.
Which on a Friday afternoon might be kinda nice.
Well, first six Fridays in the summertime, that traffic gets a little tight in the downtown area.
But there's other times, I mean, it's part of a system.
Yeah, you're just, you're building the system over the course of time, and, you know, all this is, at the end of the day, is a study, you know, and it, it's a good effort to study this regardless, to fully understand, is this feasible, is this viable? You know, then you, yeah, there, there might be some legitimate concerns, I realize, from, you know, downtown aspects, or, you know, people not, uh, you know, traveling through town, I realize from a business owner, whether you're downtown or on the south end, there might be some concerns there, uh, albeit I did have, um, reduced the data, you know, and it, depending on the study, you know, and we, we had a number in our, in our O and D study from ten years ago, there was a number back in the ninety-eight transportation plan, you know, how much this eleven thousand six hundred vehicles a day that go each direction, or both directions combined through downtown, how much of that is actually through traffic? And I've seen it, numbers from ten percent to twenty-five percent, they, they reduced this data, they arrived at twenty-two percent, is true through traffic, yeah, so about, yeah, twenty-five hundred vehicles a day, twenty-six, yeah.
And I, I realize the county has this new funding source, but I think they could use that money to maintain the roads that they have instead of worrying about building this, which I think for Hutchinson has a pretty marginal benefit, in my opinion, but maybe people disagree with me, but this baby's not gonna be cheap, yeah, and for that kinda money, they should maintain the roads they have, 'cause I don't know that intent of that sales tax is just to start blasting in new roads everywhere, but maybe it was.
No, and I don't think that's intent, this concept's been out there for many, many years.
That's what I was gonna say, even when the, uh, southwest ring road was talked about, this was being looked at too, and, um, you know, twenty-two comes up and it's, you know.
I shouldn't say this, but Bill's sitting here, I know his idea was, well, you would be saying right now, I shouldn't speak foreign, but he'd say, go to the northwest, don't do this, go, get down there and connect to that southwest one, and then you would, yeah, you know, arrive at a, a true ring road pretty quickly, but the environmental, yeah, it's just hardly feasible from an environmental standpoint to get around that direction.
Teen under car vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, that being said, though, I just don't think traffic downtown's that bad, and Kansas takes seven minutes to get through downtown.
But, that's not a good thing.
Yeah, but I mean, traffic rarely gets that backed up, I mean, the Fridays in the summertime, it gets a little bit rough when people are going up north, but, I mean, I have a front door seat for it every day, and it's rarely that bad downtown, and people complain about it way more than what the actual problem is, 'cause if you drive somewhere where there's actual traffic, it's way worse than what we have here.
There's nothing.
Yeah, I don't, just, that's a conversation to potentially have in the future, approving this effort doesn't make any sort of project a given, you know, this is a, a long ways from that, this is, this is good planning, good studying, in my mind, at this point, and honestly, I think the county's gonna do this whether we're sitting at the table or not, and I think it's in the city's best interest, we do contribute, so we're at the table.
So you have a say.
If we don't get, put the fifteen thousand dollars in, frankly, I might not be invited to the meetings, you know, and that's, you know, they can look at it in that light, too, you know.
The one thing I hear about downtown is, in the truck traffic, you know, it, it is, it's noisy, and, and you, you're not gonna get away from that, you know, no matter if you're sitting in the restaurant having lunch or dinner, and the semis are coming through, and, you know, they're downshifting, they're stopping, they're starting, they're going, there's exhausts that's there, I mean, there's, there's noise with them, and I'm not, nothing against that, but that is one of the factors, too.
Yep, and freight, uh, freight isn't going away in this-
No.
-this area, you know, fifteen will always be a fairly significant freight corridor through town here, you know, and I think the other thing on that note, you know, we've been talking a lot about Highway fifteen, it is gonna get narrowed, it, it's, it's over, we've talked about this a lot, you know, many months ago, but it is overbuilt currently, you know, the, the, the section out there is for four lanes, two lanes both direction and parking on both sides, so, you know, we are taking this opportunity to, to narrow the roadway, hopefully that slows people down, gets them a little more cognizant to, to pedestrian movements, uh, and what else is going on along the corridor, albeit, I don't think the freight community's necessarily gonna appreciate that, so, I mean, and that's how it goes, it's, it's a balancing act, you, you know, the, you wanna create a downtown, you know, atmosphere and, and protect pedestrians as much as possible and slow people down, but on the other hand, this is a freight corridor, and it probably, they're not gonna enjoy driving slower to some degree and hitting more traffic lights, or now they, now they have to acknowledge that pedestrian and let them cross in front of them, 'cause there's no ignoring them, 'cause they're standing on the end of a bump out, so, yeah.
Well, I mean, that being said, they have options to go around downtown currently too, if they don't want to go downtown, I mean, they can go down Adams or go down the southwest ring road and wrap around, and it's not ideal, but-
It depends where you're coming from.
You know.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and agree with Chad, I'll second it. Motion by Steve, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Uh, governance, we have the Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, Public Arts Commission minutes from December eleventh, two thousand nineteen, City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Report for December two thousand nineteen, Economic Development Authority Board minutes from December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, Planning Commission minutes from August twentieth, two thousand nineteen. Chief Jefferson, do you have anything for us tonight?
Just a couple things, actually, um, just wanna talk a little bit about our last snow emergency, um, some of the- Just want to talk a little bit about our last snow emergency, um, some of the statistics from that. As we had talked about earlier in the year, generally speaking, our first snow emergency, we don't tow vehicles. Um, and we remain consistent with that this year, however, our first snow emergency did generate approximately eighty citations. That being said, pretty minimal for complaints. And I think the, probably the way to stop that the best is just a little bit more education. So that's why I wanted to bring that up in front of you today, hopefully anybody at home happened to be watching. Just to keep in mind that even though the, the street is plowed, that doesn't mean that the snow emergency's over, it ends at seven AM the following morning. So the ones, the complaints that we did receive, that's usually their rationale behind it, well, the street was plowed, so I figured it was okay. So, again, just a reminder and more for your information more than anything else. Um, and then the other thing, um, February seventh, applications for our Citizens Police Academy end. We are, to be quite frank, hurting for applicants at this point. Uh, so I bring it up in front of you, not necessarily to recruit you, but again, if people from the public are watching and something that they're interested in, um, they can contact the police department for an application. And I think we, I think, um, applications end on February seventh and then we would start the following Tuesday more than likely.
Is it weekly?
It's ten weeks, uh, once a week for approximately two to three hours.
And what days? Do you know?
Great question, um, I'm not sure what day of the week, it was, I know we were talking about between Tuesday or Thursday, I think it's Thursday, Thursday evenings.
So people interested, call the police.
Yep, call the police department, get an application, fill it out, and, uh, hopefully we'll be able to do it. Again, we're going to try it again, uh, later, the nice thing about it, um, is I've been having conversations with the principal at the high school, uh, Mr. Daniker, and we're hoping to be able to, um, coordinate with the Tiger Path and possibly offer some kind of high school credit to be in our Citizens Police Academy. Obviously that won't work, work for this year, uh, but that would be something that we'd work towards next year.
But it kind of stopped for a few years.
I believe about ten years ago, yeah, um, and just one of the things that I wanted to try to bring back when I was promoted, so.
Remember going through it and it was really interesting, so encourage people to think about it.
What, what do you cover?
I mean, that's. It's, it's a, it's just a general introduction to the police department and our function. So, uh, on the first night, you know, I talk about the city government, how we interact with that, um, how we do business at the police department, but then each week we take, um, an area of the police department, one of our officers will then, um, be the trainer or the speaker that night, and, uh, usually it's in their area of expertise. And then they just talk about that and then, um, usually generates quite a few questions, but, you know, as Steve mentioned, it, uh, usually people, it's, once we get them in the door, um, then they're hooked and, you know, it's not hard to keep them in their seats, but it's just having, having the time, I think, probably is more than.
Age requirement?
Uh, no, there isn't, um, so, but what we would suggest if, if it, if they're a juvenile at this point, that they have a parent or guardian that are, that attend along with them. Obviously, I would say high school age kids and older, um, is, would be better only because, uh, some of the material that we cover probably isn't appropriate for a middle school or a elementary school aged person or child.
Might be a good program for, like you said, you know, partner kind of with the Tiger Path, I mean, vision of it. You, if you grab a young person, whether it's a girl or a guy, and they're kind of thinking about maybe wanting to do something with the police.
Yeah, that's our hope, that's our hope. Um, and history has shown, uh, with our department, if we, if we hire hometown kids, they have a, a tendency to stay a little longer, which benefits the city, benefits the police department. You know, we don't expect them to stay their entire life here, but sure would be nice.
That's right.
Passed at the end was the opportunity for a ride.
That's part of the curriculum, yep, so, um, every.
Out at night.
And not in the backseat.
Depends on if you, if that's where you want to ride. Any other questions?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Andy, you have anything else for us? Kent?
A couple of things, and we've been talking a lot about Mid-Not, and I know we talked last, I just wanted to just reiterate, you know, Mid-Not does have their quirks as we work through these processes and such, but they've been a great partner on this project from the beginning, you know, but they have their policies and procedures and standard practices and, and such, so just, you know, there's some frustration along the way, but, uh, but, uh, no, they've been, they've been great, whether it's been our citizen advisory group or providing information, uh, through them, the district office or, or their consultant S E H. So just want to reiterate that, you know, they, they, there's good people there that are doing their job and, and I think we're, we're confident that people that are going to be involved this summer are, are good people with the, uh, you know, a fair amount of history on other construction projects in the area, so just want to say that, so.
I kind of was thinking about that with that right-of-way permit, you know, you said you didn't think you would need, but it's like, well, that's probably their process.
Yeah, somebody else thinks we do, so, yeah, as it goes up the ladder, but anyways. Uh, and then otherwise, uh, Lakes, uh, Reverbation Improvements, our bonding request, you might have noticed the governor came out with, uh, with his, uh, list, we weren't on that list. We did receive a phone call, uh, from, uh, governor's staff people and, uh, you know, gave us a little bit of input on what we can possibly provide to, you know, potentially climb the list, but there's going to be two more lists coming on the, as the bonding bill is developed, you know, one from the House and one from the Senate and.
It's got to be in one.
Yeah, we'll see what, what happens from there. Uh, we did meet with the consultant, uh, Todd Hubbard with, uh, with Wink and Associates now, and, uh, yeah, Todd's, uh, getting geared up, uh, to, uh, you know, arrange visits with our legislators and start to, uh, work his channels as far as delivering projects like this. And I think he'd be reaching out to you, Steve, like, uh, Mr. Paulson alluded to in an email.
John Wilson, yeah.
That's it.
Thanks, Ken. Mr. Sabora?
Nothing else tonight.
All right, thank you. Dave, start with you.
Uh, I guess the only thing I would mention, I did send it to the, uh, council members and a couple others, there's, uh, Todd Winkler is retired from the Minnesota Executive or, not the Development Commission. Open house is on, for the date from, uh, two thirty to five thirty, something like that. And it's at the, uh.
Wilmer, uh, Wilmer Community Center.
Yeah, I got this, yep.
Steve?
Uh, a couple of things, on the financials, they're mentioned about the, uh, stormwater and there was higher costs last year with some other projects, um, yeah, curious.
Yeah, I think it was primarily due to the, the stormwater costs within the actual Fifth Avenue South End, Altitude Road projects, not exactly sure how Andy did all the math on that as, as far as using reserves. We also have been more proactive, uh, you know, with identifying projects, uh, you know, nuisance drainage situations that we've known about for some time and trying to figure out solutions to those. And, you know, we have an individual on our staff, uh, Mr. Olson, uh, that, you know, John's very knowledgeable of what's out there and what needs to be corrected and, and we're, we're trying to make an effort to address those things, you know, not that John's leaving anytime soon, but, you know, there'll come a day when John's knowledge of these situations doesn't exist, so we're trying to knock, he's got a list and we're trying to chip away at it, yeah.
That's not part of the project planning then, or?
No, it's more so within the actual budget items of the Stormwater Utility Fund. It's not capital outlay item, yeah.
Thank you, the other thing was sculpture stroll, uh, the call for art ends Friday this week. Right now we've got like thirty pieces that have been submitted uh, from some artists that have been here before and a number of new artists and quite a variety of pieces, so, um, people will enjoy it again. And then, uh, the last thing I was going to say is, uh, I'm thinking about with the election coming up, what, uh, my plan is going to be, my seat is up for election or reelection. And, uh, after thinking about it, I decided, I was thinking about running again for the seat, was actually thinking about maybe running for mayor again, but, uh, I just decided that I'm actually going to be retiring from work later this year. And, uh, just think maybe it's a good time to step away from the council. So, a lot of things to do, but there's things that, um, a lot of projects that have been kind of put on the back shelf, so, uh, that'll give an opportunity, and there's some new things that are, you know, opportunities and new things to, that will, uh, devote some time to. And, uh, just thought, saying something now gives people more of a chance to think about it. Maybe talk to Matt and if you're going to have your class again, but, you know, filing actually is in the middle of May, I believe, and, uh, so it's several months to think about it. And I just thought, saying something now, um, gives people that opportunity instead of up at the last minute, so.
You're gone too.
If you're around.
But, yeah, just to. It's a good segue in.
What's that?
Date for that yet?
No, I, I usually do it about a week or two before filing, so, I don't know, so probably early May.
All right, thanks, Steve. Chad?
I don't have any bombshells to drop tonight, so, but no, I, I don't have anything to add, so.
Thanks, Chad. Mary?
Um, I don't have anything of great significance, we're getting another two windows done for the little church and they'll be installed in a couple of weeks and they'll look beautiful and we're fundraising for it, so it's going good. Um, I, I do want to say though, that if you're going to vote early on that presidential primary ballots, you can get them here at city hall, they're, just walk in the door and ask for them, so, do that, that's it.
Thanks, Mary. Mr. Yannick?
Um, just two things, uh, this Thursday at six o'clock, from six to seven, third at the event center, we've got our marketing and branding group is back, they'll be doing some presentations on some of the research that they've have, so, um, just kind of a heads up and reminder about that. And then something to, to think about, and we'll have to put this on the next agenda, but February twenty-fifth, our second meeting in February, that's caucus night, so we can't have our meeting after six o'clock. So, last time we did this.
We did it early.
Yeah, we did it early, so we can do that again, um, I would just note to staff, if we have any public hearings that night, which, you know, that would be a problem or anything, but, um, so we'll look to change it at our next council meeting. If you have a preference, it'd be good to give us a heads up, like I said, my plan would probably be we'd schedule it for four o'clock that day.
That's good.
Otherwise we'd have to look for a different day, so that's the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, I'm good with that.
No, I'll, we'll, we'll have it as a formal action item at the next meet, at the next meeting, so there's no need to do anything tonight, but I want to do that there right now, so if there's a conflict, just to kind of, so, so, always that's it, so.
For that Thursday meeting, uh, I'm planning to attend, is anybody else planning to attend that Thursday?
No, Steve and I are on, we're on the steering committee, so we'll be seeing it before then.
Okay. All right, so. All right, uh, actually, all I have is, uh, this, uh, plumber brought it up to me, so I, I said that I would bring it up at the meeting just for the public, to check your roof vents for your sewer roof vents, so they're not froze shut. And, um, your gas meter has a vent on it, kind of looks like an upside-down hat. So, um, I know that been nice warm weather, so the snow kind of gone down, but if, uh, we do get snow again and, uh, get drifts around your gas meter, make sure you check them so that, uh, vents are clear, so, otherwise that's all I have.
I used that word, "if."
If.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?